I'd like to call this meeting of your North City Council order, February 3rd, 2014. Hobbie, please call the roll.
Mr. Bub.
Here.
Mr. Cost.
Here.
Mrs. Floyd.
Here.
Mr. Guthrie.
Here.
Ms. Hall.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Marby.
Here.
Mr. Raff.
Here.
Mr. Roletta.
Here.
And Mr. Blake.
Present. Almost at everyone here in the seat. I appreciate that. Thank you. Mr. Blake will talk later.
Yes. So we have nine here and one present. Next, we have invocation by Mrs. Floyd, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Almighty God, we come before you today. You are the source of all our blessings, and we thank you for all the blessings that you have given us. We thank you for this opportunity to come and gather together in this day. We ask that you be with all our citizens and our city employees, especially with another winter storm facing us. We ask that your hand of blessing on this meeting, we ask that you would guide and direct our meeting so that it's full of wisdom, productivity, and respect for one another. Thank you for helping us to accomplish our work and our goals this day. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in heaven, in the name of the Lord.
Thank you, Mrs. Floyd. Next on the agenda, we have caucus. That's the time for council to discuss anything that may come up on the agenda this evening. Do we have anything? Okay. Next, we have the minutes from council from January 21st, 2014. Do we have motion to approve those?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Raff.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bub. All's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That passes. Thank you. We have two reports from standing committees this evening. We have one from finance and one from street. Without objection, those will be received and filed. Also this evening, reports from city officials. We have two this evening. One from city auditor Stephen Johnson announcing that the city's comprehensive annual financial report was awarded the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association. This year's award represents the 22nd consecutive year the city has received the CAFR award. I think that deserves a round of applause. Would you like to make a comment at all? I know this is out of the realm, but I'll give you an opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Ellington. I just want to thank you for your acknowledgement of the award, and I would like to thank my office staff because they're the ones who make awards like this possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. The other tonight, we have bar judge, North City Income Tax Administrator, the income tax revenue report for January 15th, 2014. Those will be received and filed. Under communications this evening, we have one, two, three, four, five, six communications, although Mayor Hall will not be doing the proclamation this evening. We're doing that at a later date. Again, without objections, those will also be received and filed. We have two public hearings this evening. The first one is ordinance 13-44. Hobbie, would you please read that?
Notice is hereby given that the North City Council shall take action upon ordinance number 13-44 on February 3rd, 2014. Said ordinance accepts changing the zoning classification of certain real property generally described as 343 Eastern Avenue, City of Newark, Licking County, Ohio, from that of RS Single Family Residence District to MFR Multi-Family Residence District.
Again, this is a public hearing. Do we have anyone that would like to speak pro or con on this public hearing on ordinance Just give us your name and address on the record, please.
My name is Brad Booker, 1140 Clare Street, Tascal, Ohio. I represent Shiloh Holistic Opportunity Programs, which is the sponsor of the house at 343 Eastern Avenue. And there was a couple of questions that were raised in the last public hearing. One was on insurance. We have not completely finalized our insurance on the house. I've been told and I have documentation to the effect that more than likely tomorrow we'll be closing on that insurance for the house, and so I just wanted the council to know that. I was also instructed to contact the county building code department, which I did contact them, and I got some much different information than I was aware of from city officials that I originally had spoken to. The county building code staff indicates that since it's a single-family house built in that manner, then we can only house, in terms of occupancy, five residents. If it's rezoned, there's some modifications that we will have to do to the house in order to expand the occupancy. And so that's the information that I bring tonight. And with that, if anyone has any questions.
All right. Thanks, sir. Anyone else to speak on this public hearing?
Nancy Wayless, 7441 Stewart Road. I just had a few questions about the zoning also, and it's going to be, I assume, wanting to be changed to MFR so it can be operated as a rooming house. Is this correct?
That's correct.
Correct. And I wondered if it would be, the city has two separate rules for rooming houses. It has a city ordinance and it has a property maintenance code, and I was curious, and they don't match. So I was curious which this would be ran under. The ordinance or the code? Because they're different.
I'm not sure the answer is.
There's where footage is different, you know, things like that. How much they pay in fees is different. So I was just curious, I don't know if they knew that those two were different or not. And as far as the modifications, I would assume if there was any modifications that had to be, wait, I'm assuming, I'm asking, if there was any modifications they'd have to do to the house, would they have to reapply through the planning commission because of So those are my questions, I guess, before you vote on this. I don't know if you can answer those or if you'll even vote tonight. And if any of you would like to know the differences between the property maintenance code and the city ordinance, I have a copy. I made a little quick thing about the difference. Okay?
Okay. Thank you.
Can we, is it okay to hear the points?
Oh, I thought she had done. I'm sorry.
You don't want to go over. You just want to share them with us.
Well, I figured you might want information before you vote on something. There you go. I don't know if I made enough comments. That's it. Thank you.
Any other comments? Yes, sir.
Good evening, council. I'm Reverend Reverend Pastor Shiloh Church. My address is 590 Campbell Court, H. O., Ohio. I just wanted to give a comment. We have been trying to do our due diligence, and of course, we want to make sure that we are in compliance with all of the regulations required to try and operate the house. But I did want to just give a statement about the cause and the reason why the Matthew House is open in the first place. As you know, it's designed to be a transitional house for those that are returning into our community who need a residence, but also need help in development of job skills and given a second chance and an opportunity. We are finding out, as we're going through the process, that there's one stipulation, I presume, that came as a result of those persons that might be having rental properties, that were having all kinds of individuals live there without restrictions. We do understand that this might be something that falls under that, but is a kind of a unique situation, and I would ask that the council would at least consider what our goals and our intentions are, and that is to provide an opportunity for them to be monitored, but also to be encouraged to reacclimate themselves into society so they might contribute and sustain themselves and their families. So that's what I wanted to add to the discussion. Any questions?
Mr. Sassen. Would you mind, do you happen to have an answer on these two differences?
No, not tonight. I'd be glad to before it comes before council for a vote.
Thank you.
Committee, we could talk about it. But I'm not good off the top of my head.
I understand that completely. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else pro or con on this? Yes, sir.
Reverend Booker.
Yes, sir.
As Pastor indicated, there are some conflicts, it seems, between what the city expects and what the county expects. And one issue that I would like to have an answer is that we were originally told that for a religious-based organization, there could be an exemption whereby we could increase the occupancy based on the fact that we're trying to do good things in the community. And so I would like to know if that is a possibility, that we would like to apply for that exemption.
Thank you. Anyone else on this public hearing? We're going to close this public hearing. Mr. Guthrie.
At some stage, we're going to get to ask questions.
Yeah. What we're going to do is read it a second time, and then I guess go from there. I think that's the best thing to do. We're going to close this public hearing, and now we're going to read ordinance 13-44 for our second reading.
Ordinance number 13-44 by Mr. Raff, Mrs. Floyd, Ms. Dare, and ordinance changing the zoning classification of certain real property generally described as 343 Eastern Avenue, City of Newark, Licking County, Ohio, from that of Single Family Residence District to MFR Multi-Family Residence District.
You've heard the second reading of 13-44. What is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Raff.
Ask a point or a question, please, sir, before I make a motion. Do we have to, and maybe Mr. Sassen will weigh in on this, but do we have to have a motion to adopt prior to having a motion to take?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to adopt.
Order of 13-44 by Mr. Raff. Second. Second. Second by Mr. Bub. Any discussion?
I have questions.
Ms. Hall.
I would like to direct my questions to Reverend Booker. Is that possible?
Well, not normally, no, but, you know, kind of that usually is what happens in committee. Might be a good suggestion to maybe table this if we have some questions. Mr. Marby.
I can just indicate that this council needs to look at not the particular use of what is going to occur or what could possibly occur. What you're voting on is a zoning change. That means if it was somebody who was just saying that they want to convert this into a duplex, would you be okay with that? Not what is the particular use. You do not vote on a particular use of a property. You vote on whether or not it is sufficient to be in that zoning classification. Whether or not this organization can make it into what they're trying to do has no impact on whether or not we agree that it's okay to rezone this. I can tell you that I am in support of rezoning this property the way that it is, just based on the fact that there's multifamily housing in the area, and it conforms with that particular zoning for that area. It is not inconsistent with what is in that area. Whether or not the administration approves it, whether under the property maintenance code or the ordinances, that it's a rooming house or a hat is of no consequence at this point for us. It's just whether or not it meets that zoning classification and will, are we okay with anything that is possibly okay with going inside of that zoning classification? So look at it on that standpoint. You may be ready to vote on it tonight. If you still wish to table it, I understand that, but just realize that a particular use is not what you vote on. You vote on the zoning classification as a whole, if anything that can fit inside of that zone. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Marby. Any other discussion? Ms. Hall.
I'm motion to table for two weeks.
Ms. Hall has made a motion to table for two weeks. Is there a second? Second. Second by Mr. Cost. Since a motion to table is not debated, Hobbie, please call the roll. Are you ready?
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Marby.
No.
Mr. Raff.
Yes.
Mr. Roletta.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
No.
13-44 will be tabled for two weeks. Do we need to maybe send this back to committee next Monday to have some more discussion? Do we think that would be a good idea? Whose committee is this in? Ms. Hall, is that in your committee? Mr. Raff, is that in your committee?
Service.
No, service. Mr. Cost. Can we do that, Mr. Cost?
Sure.
Thank you. Okay. Next, we have another public hearing, resolution 14-10. Mr. Guthrie.
Mr. President, a question if I could.
Sure.
The motion that we voted on is to table for two weeks.
Yes.
This may be a longer question. If the committee is not ready to vote it out next Monday, where does that put us?
Well, it's already been voted out, but help me with that, Mr. Sassen.
It's already been voted out of committee. Wouldn't have to be voted again. It's, as I understand, it's being sent back simply for purposes of discussion.
Yes.
Fact-finding, if you will.
Okay. Do we all agree with that? Okay.
Notice is hereby given that the North City Council shall at a later date to be determined and announced thereafter take action upon resolution number 14-10. Said resolution approves the renewal application for placement of farmland in an agricultural district for the property located at 2811 River Road, Grandville, Ohio, 43023.
Any pros or cons on this public hearing on 14-10? It will be referred to the service committee, but is there any comments? Mr. Raff.
Yes, I'm familiar with this piece of property being in the third ward. It's been operated by the Harris family for a good number of years. They're great neighbors. They operate a great farm. They're friends with everybody in the neighborhood. They've never had any complaints about them, and I would encourage people to move forward with this formality.
Thank you, Mr. Raff. Is there any other comments pro or con on 14-10? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll refer that to Mr. Cost's service committee. Okay. Next on the agenda this evening, we have comments from citizens. There are two places for comments from citizens on the agenda. One is now before the legislation, and one is after. All we ask is that you give your name and address for the record, and try to be brief. Any comments on this? First comments from citizens. Okay. Now we'll move on to resolutions on the second reading, 14-01.
Resolution 14-01 by Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Raff, Mr. Marby. A resolution authorizing and directing the director of public service of the City of Newark, Ohio, to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for remittance of funds for leasing city-owned property to others to use for agricultural purposes.
You've heard the second reading of 14-01. What is your wish?
President.
Mr. Cost.
Make a motion to adopt.
Motion by Mr. Cost.
Second.
Second by Mr. Guthrie. Do we have any discussion on 14-01? Seeing none, Hobbie, please call the roll and vote.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Marby.
Yes.
Mr. Raff.
Yes.
Mr. Roletta.
Yes.
And Mr. Blake.
Yes. 14-01 has passed. Next on the second reading, we have 14-04.
Resolution 14-04 by Mr. Blake, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cost, Mr. Raff, Mr. Marby. A resolution appropriating monies for current expenses of the municipal corporation.
You've heard the second reading of 14-04. What is your wish, Mr. President? Mr. Blake?
I make a motion to adopt 14-04.
Motion by Mr. Blake, second by Mrs. Floyd. Any discussion on 14-04? Seeing none, Hobbie, please call the roll and vote.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Marby.
Yes.
Mr. Raff.
Yes.
Mr. Roletta.
Yes.
And Mr. Blake.
Yes.
14-04 has passed. Next on the second reading, we have 14-05.
Resolution 14-05 by Ms. Hall, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cost, Mr. Raff, and Mr. Marby. A resolution appropriating monies for current expenses of the municipal corporation.
You've heard the second reading of 14-05. What is your wish? Ms. Hall.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Hall, second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any discussion on 14-05? Seeing none, Hobbie, please call the roll and vote.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Marby.
Yes.
Mr. Raff.
Yes.
Mr. Roletta.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
14-05 has passed. Next resolution's on the first reading, 14-06.
Resolution 14-06 by Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Raff. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor of the City of Newark to submit an application to the Ohio Department of Public Safety for an award of fiscal year 2014-2015 funding under the Ohio EMS Training and Equipment Grant Program.
14-06 will be held for a second reading. Next, we have 14-07.
Resolution 14-07 by Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Marby, Mr. Raff. A resolution appropriating monies for current expenses of the municipal corporation.
14-07, Mr. Blake.
Mr. President, I move to waive the second reading of this motion selection.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Blake, second by Mrs. Floyd to waive the two-day reading rule. Mr. Blake.
Mr. President, it was discussed in committee for Mr. Fulton that there was a budgeting error on his behalf for not getting the money in the proper account before, and so now they have some bills that they need to be paid, so this needs to get taken care of as soon as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. Hobbie, please call the roll and waive the two-day reading rule.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Marby.
Yes.
Mr. Raff.
Yes.
Mr. Roletta.
Yes.
And Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Two-day reading rule has been waived. Mr. Blake.
Mr. President, motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Blake, second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any other discussion on 14-07? Seeing none, Hobbie, please call the roll and vote.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Marby.
Yes.
Mr. Raff.
Yes.
Mr. Roletta.
Yes.
And Mr. Blake.
Yes.
14-07 has passed. Next, we have 14-08.
Resolution 14-08 by Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Marby, and Mr. Raff. A resolution appropriating and disappropriating monies for current expenses of the municipal corporation.
14-08 will be held for a second reading. And that is all of our legislation for the seat. Next, we have our second chance of citizens' comments. Do we have anyone who would like to comment? Yes, sir.
Mr. Ellington, members of the council. I come to these, and I sure really tried it, and it blew my tongue.
Would you give us your name?
Roger Harris, 2011 River Road. Sorry about that.
It's okay.
Looking at communications here, I see where there is a Nicholas Sheldon, sales associate, requesting city look at alternative retrofitting for existing Cobra Head fixtures with energy-efficient retrofit, energy-efficient retrofit kits. Professional engineer, registered in the state of Ohio, local engineer. I've been involved with studies for the city of Columbus. Some of these retrofit kits specifically going to LED, the driver boards, which are a key element to this particular kit. They did a study in the city of Columbus where they invited multiple manufacturers in to demonstrate their wares, see how long they last versus their guaranteed lifetime. Driver boards fail often for multiple reasons. One of them is they can't dissipate the heat in the retrofitted assembly versus a frame actually made for this purpose. I'll make it short. If the city does wish, I'll make my services available free of charge to evaluate any energy retrofit kits you guys decide you want to look into.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for citizens' comments? Okay. Next, we'll go on to the administration. Any comments from the administration? Any cabinet comments? Mr. Johnson.
Well, it's just enough for me.
You did it so well, too. The Honorable Law Director, Mr. Sassen.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll pass.
Mayor Hall.
I will pass also.
Mr. Bub.
Thank you. I'll pass.
Mr. Cost.
I will need to call a service committee meeting. That I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Cost. Mrs. Floyd.
I just want to congratulate Steve and his office staff. They always do an exceptional job, and we appreciate the work that they do. I also want to call personnel committee for next Monday night. And with that, I pass.
Thank you, Mrs. Floyd. Mr. Guthrie.
Thank you. Mr. President, I'll pass.
Mr. Guthrie, Ms. Hall.
Yeah, I just have a comment. I wanted to thank our service director and our safety director. Recently, we had a couple of issues in the first ward, and they took care of it very quickly. I know that they can't always do that, but their fixes were quite appreciated, and I got calls from those people in the ward. Thank them. And with that, I'll pass.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Mr. Johnson.
Call for the street committee next Monday evening, and I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Marby.
I will pass.
Thank you, Mr. Marby. Mr. Raff?
Thank you. A couple of things. One, I want to congratulate Steve Johnson and his staff, and thank you, Steve, for giving credit to your staff. Very nice thing for you to do. Went to the Brown House breakfast last Friday, put on the Licking County Chamber of Commerce sponsors of the velvet ice cream. Just, yeah, it was great. There was more than enough to eat there between the breakfast and the velvet ice cream sandwiches and the Tadato's pizza.
Pizza, yeah.
But we run business here in Licking County who is celebrating a 100th year of being a business. Do you remember, are they in the fourth or fifth generation? Fourth generation. That's just remarkable that a family-owned business can make it that long. I want to congratulate them, and with that, I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Raff. Mr. Rowland?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll pass.
Did you have something else that I cut you off?
Yeah, you didn't cut me off, but I just remembered I did have one other thing.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Friend, a very close friend today, and a lot of people around know, Joe Grisay passed away. So ask everybody if you know them, or their family members, if you keep them, or family prayers.
Thank you, Mr. Raff. Mr. Rowland, I'll give you a chance.